Five, four, three, two, one.
In the spirit of respect, authenticity and reconciliation, the town of Slave Lake honours and acknowledges that we are situated on the traditional lands of Sarwich First Nation within Treaty Territory, home to Indigenous, Métis and Inuit peoples who have occupied these lands since time immemorial. Counselor Gramlich.
Motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. And that is carried. Counselor Adams.
Motion to adopt the minutes. Of the previous meeting on August nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay, any further discussion on those? Call to question those in favor. And that is carried. Okay, now that the admin's out of the way, we can start with our delegation. If you guys want to introduce yourselves and who you are, and then the floor is yours.
Awesome. Good evening, your worship, honourable members of Town Council. My name is Chris Naftal. I am the Executive Director of Rising Above Ministries Slave Lake. This is Pastor Bruce Clark. He's our Senior Chaplain. Thank you so much for having us here this evening. It's a great honour to be here to speak before you. Today, we wanted to talk to you about addiction. This is something that's prevalent in every community, large or small. This is something that has been plaguing people for many, many years. I'm pretty certain that everyone in this room has someone in very close proximity to them that's suffering from addiction. I'm sure that you're aware of the regional studies done from Jennifer Churchill, from Alberta North, Central Alliance. You guys have seen everything that's been happening, even in this region. It's something that hits very close to home. Even just recently, there is a twenty-one-year-old that passed away from overdose here in this community. And we give our condolences to the family of this individual. According to the Canadian Institute for Substance Use and Addiction Research, it is estimated that sixty-seven thousand deaths per year are attributable to substance use in Canada. The annual economic cost of mental illness and substance use in Canada is estimated at over ninety billion per year. This includes healthcare costs, criminal justice, loss productivity, and reductions in health-related qualities of life. I could go on and on about the negative impacts and everything that's happening on addiction in this community, but you guys know this information. So what we want to do today is come and talk about a possible solution, a solution to this problem. And that's where Rising Above Ministries Slave Lake comes into effect. It is our mission to help people overcome addiction, break cycles of defeat, and help people find hope beyond brokenness. What we are trying to offer this community is a six-month faith-based residential program where we focus on something called the Helps Model. This would be housing, employment training, life skills, personal development, and spiritual formation. We want to work with all of the different resources in this community and have a multifaceted holistic approach to helping the people in this community suffering from addiction to find their way to recovery. Our program, we focus on three main areas. We focus on case management, helping the people that come into our program set goals, and we help them through accountability, reach these goals. We offer life skills and personal development on a Monday to Friday basis, where we help them learn to be effective members of the community so they can start contributing into the community that they're in, into this community that we live in. And the last thing we focus on is something called inner healing, to help the people that are dealing with the trauma and the deep pain and hurt that keeps them in these perpetual cycles of addiction, to heal from these things and break free of these things once and for all. What we are not doing is a homeless encampment. We are not a safe use center. We are not offering any type of detox. This is a recovery program. The members that are participating in this program will have to be sober through the six months of this program. There will be random drug testing to ensure that there is sobriety. There will be curfews that ensure that the participants are following the rules and being responsible for themselves in this community and in our program. Yep, so the port, the way that it works is we have a residential section where the participants are going to be staying during their six months at the program. And then we're going to have an office section that allows this work to be done, the case management, the life skills, personal development, and their inner healing. That's kind of the model of our program that we're looking to implement as of right now. We have made a lot of good progress in getting set up as a nonprofit organization, getting established and incorporated as a religious society. We're looking at getting registered as a nonprofit organization, developing our charity status. And now we're basically looking for this location. Ideally, it would all be encompassed in one location, the residential portion and the office section, so we can have all of our, our program all in one place. And basically, yeah, we wanted to come before you today to basically announce what we're trying to implement in the community of Slave Lake and just let you know kind of who we are and what we're hoping to do here. That's, that's basically all we have to say.
Okay, um, I obviously have met with you guys first and then I'll weigh in on the rest of council here. You guys have come and presented before, just to introduce yourselves. And I had suggested that a delegation would be great to introduce yourselves to the community. Approvals and things like the land use bylaw, you guys have been dealt with the planning department or dealing with the department on that. And I think we had a lot of conversation about the importance of introducing yourself to the community and so that our residents know what services are offered, what this is and what this is not. And so I think that's really important. So I appreciate you guys taking the time to come here today. I will comment that we have seen other residential programs in the communities, in our community work. There are Poundmaker's Lodge has a residence in the southwest area of town that has seen a ton of success. And I think different programs work for different people, so I love the variety. And I think it's important if we're focusing on recovery. So I personally think it's a great idea, and I appreciate you sharing all this information with us today. And then I'll take it to council if they have any questions, commentary. Counselor Hughes.
Thank you guys so much for the presentation. I was aware prior to you guys doing your delegation about what you guys were doing here with the ministry, and I think it's amazing. In my previous chat with Bruce, I believe you did mention that this is like a proven program that originally came from Grand Prairie?
Correct.
Or it has been done elsewhere? Can you elaborate a little bit about that, just for kind of the public's knowledge?
Yeah, Rising Above Grand Prairie has been around since two thousand and three, so two thousand and seven. Sorry, so they've been quite successful in Grand Prairie for almost twenty years. Mel, I can't say his last name, Sigal Cattle, is the Executive Director there, who just resigned to take over Rising Above Canada. They're now implementing to going in more, more communities, especially in Northern Alberta. They really have a heart to see an addiction center in every community in the north. So, yeah, they've tried and true. This is like a, I'd say it's almost like a franchise. Where, you know, you buy a McDonald's and it's all, here's all the policies, here's what you have to do. You just have to tweak it for your community. And that's what we've been working on for the last few months is just making it for Slave Lake.
Okay, so the Helps method and everything kind of in your brochure are the same sort of tools and resources that they have used prior?
Yes, all the curriculum, all the successful things they've used. We have those tools at our disposal.
Awesome.
Yeah, we're quite excited about that. It makes it a whole lot easier for us instead of starting from the ground up. It's already tried, tested.
Yes, yeah, that's definitely helpful. I love that it is a six months. I think that's a great, you know, timeframe to, to help somebody. And I really love the life skills aspect to this as well. You're teaching them, you know, how to get a job afterward, just some of those core things that are really helpful for kind of future success, right? So I feel like it sets people up really well, which is.
Part of the program is they have to volunteer for a few months in the community and help out. So then they learn, you know, get to work on time, look good, be dressed properly, do all those things, don't play on your phone while you're trying to work. All those things that most people take for granted.
Right.
But they need to learn those life skills, so.
Yeah, for sure. And on the back of your pamphlet, you do say sponsorship opportunities are available. Tell me about the funding. Are you, are there funding streams open to you for what you guys are trying to do? Or how's your luck going with that so far?
The, the major funding stream that we're looking at is through the AHPP Alberta Housing Partnership Program.
Okay.
They have done a lot of work with the recovery programs, especially in Alberta, across all of Alberta. So that's, that's our primary source that we're going to be looking at. They have applications opening this fall. And we're going to be looking at that to hopefully be able to secure our residential space and allow us to start operating from there. Other than that, we've just been collecting donations from community members and anyone else who feels called to donate to this cause and this mission.
Okay.
And, yeah, just basically gaining public awareness and getting public traction right now to we, people know kind of who we are and what we're doing. So if they feel like they want to support us, then they're able to do that.
That's great. Well, I do feel like it's already getting around. I was actually out for dinner the other night and the lady I was with had said, hey, have you heard of this new ministry that's coming up to help people? And I said, I have heard of it. So I do feel like it is coming around the community, but hopefully there will be a wonderful article from Pearl in the Lakeside Leader, which will highlight all the good work you guys are doing. So thank you so much and all the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Choba.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris and Pastor Bruce, for a wonderful presentation. Indeed, any social issue needs communal help to solve. It's not just one arm or one sector. So this is definitely welcome, and especially in the north where we have a limited amount of services. So definitely, this is welcome. As a person of faith myself, I like this model. I think this is a great model. And I'm glad to see that it's coming to Slave Lake. My question is around the population in the area. It's predominantly Indigenous population here. What is the Rising Above Ministries doing with regards to culture? How are they incorporating culture into this model to help increase accessibility for some of the most vulnerable population amongst us?
Anyone's welcome into our program. It is a Christian faith-based program, but we require that of no one to enter the program or to leave the program. We do have a screening process and an intake process that we will interview each person that comes into our program and make sure that they are a right match for our program, that we have the ability and the resources to help them. And while they're in our program, we will recommend them to utilize all of the different resources, the mental health and addiction, the counseling, whatever else that's available within the community of Slave Lake, and make sure that we're just part of the solution. We're not the only solution. We really want to integrate into this community and help the people that are in our program build up successful connections, healthy relationships that will endure past our program. We don't want them to be reliant or dependent on us. And regardless of their background coming into the community, the goal is the same, to help them overcome addiction and to be able to be a self-sufficient, optimized human being that's able to live their own life and be able to contribute into society.
We do also see Rising Above in Grand Prairie has many connections, especially with reserves, even the reserves around here. They're supportive up there because they send their people up there. But they were quite excited to hear of us coming here into Slave Lake, where they could now send their people to us. So that's what we're really hoping to see is, is able to help everybody. You know, we are one option, not the only options.
Yes, continue.
So you, Chris, you mentioned some entry criteria. So you said they'll come into the program, you'll see they're good. What are those criterias? Because I don't, I don't think they're on the brochure here. Can you, can you mention some of them? Thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's a fairly intensive screening process to make sure that the person has the, the right resources that they're able to actually set up and they don't need extra support beyond what we're able to give them. Because they will be living on their own for the most part. They will be taking care of themselves in the residential area. They'll have their own room, and then they'll, they'll have to make it to the program on time. So within the scope of our ability to help them, we don't want to take someone into the program that is beyond our capability of helping them. We don't want to set anyone up for failure, we want to set them up for success. So making sure, often, mental health and addiction go hand in hand. It's usually not one without the other. So we're focusing on helping people overcome addiction, but there's going to be mental health aspects to that as well. Some people that are on heavy medications, for example, that have very intensive mental disabilities and mental health issues. If it's beyond our ability to help them with whatever the state of being they may be in, then we'll make sure that they end up in the right direction. We don't try to take on someone that we can't help, basically.
The only actual criteria that we write down is you have to be seven days drug or alcohol free. You have to be sober coming in, because we aren't a detox center. So that is one thing that we require, is that they are at minimum seven days clean. Usually, they come out of a detox center, and then we'll do the intake process with them at that time, so.
Counselor Adams.
What kind of capacity are you looking to achieve in Slave Lake?
Well, to start, sorry, if you want to, to start small. After our early discussions with the mayor, that was strongly suggested. So we're looking at, in a perfect world, the one place we're looking at right now would be eight to ten guys upstairs and eight to ten girls downstairs. So sixteen people at most, and probably that would keep us busy for more than a couple of years. You know, as we grow and as the community gets to know us and support us, and as we see success, maybe at that time, we can grow. But as it looks right now, we'd love to start with even one house, so five people. Because that's five people we can help, so. But our housing market is a little stressed right now. There's lots going on. I know it took us less than, well, two days to sell our house. So we thought we were leaving town and here we are staying, so. So, yeah, but that's, that's our big thing right now is start with one house and whatever that looks like, if it's five people. Or if we can renovate this one facility, we're looking at maybe sixteen, twenty people at most. Over time, yeah, over time. Because a renovation of that size would probably take six, eight, ten months just to get it going, so.
Okay. Awesome. Anything further from council? Counselor Adams.
Motion to accept this information.
Motion on the floor, any further discussion? Call to question those in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing your work in the community. And like I said, remaining visible is very important. And I think that works better than, you know, hiding in a way. So I think remaining visible is important, and that makes, you know, residents comfortable with the services provided, and it's a wonderful service to have in the community, so.
Better invite these guys.
If I, if I can just say, we do have an event tomorrow night at the Legacy Center, a public event titled Understanding Addiction. So that's our first kind of public event that we're going to hold that anyone's welcome to come to and hopefully can get some good information regarding the subject of addiction and learn a little bit more about us as well.
And what time is the event at, Chris?
It's going to be at seven o'clock at the Legacy Center.
Tomorrow, Wednesday?
Tomorrow, yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay, as there is no business arising from delegations, we're going to move forward into our new business report for the Municipal Policing Committee Bylaw. And that's Kush, says Josh Kush. Kush, the floor is yours.
Good evening, your worship and council. So I'm just here to present the Municipal Policing Committee Bylaw with updated information and clarifications. Front part of the report is pretty much same as last week, so I'll just jump onto the clarifications we received from the provincial staff. So there were some direct questions from council last week, and those questions were noted, and we reached out to provincial staff following the meeting. And let's just go over those questions and provide some brief clarifications that were provided back. So first question was, what are the options available if municipalities doesn't, does not wish to form a committee? And on what basis can the province require a municipality to establish one? So it was confirmed back that municipalities cannot fully opt out of participating in the police governance if, if they are policed by the RCMP. So we have to, we have to create a committee. The authority for the province to mandate the creation of the committee, it comes from Police Amendment Act twenty twenty-two, which amended the Police Act to require civilian governance bodies for all RCMP police communities. There is section twenty-eight point three and twenty-eight point four of the Police Act that, that details the committees, and it is attached as an attachment five to this report. There is also like Police Governance Regulation and Police Governance Ministerial Regulations that also mandate creation of the policing committee. So the next question council had was, how will the proposed committee differ from the existing process, which is where council meets with the local detachment commander to set policing priorities? And, and, and in turn, they also receive quarterly presentations during public meeting. So it was confirmed that the intention is to enhance civilian governance for RCMP police communities to ensure they have a voice in setting local and provincial, local and province-wide policing priorities and performance goals. The committee is comprised of council and community members. The difference is that the committee, not just council, will meet with the local detachment commander to set the policing priorities, and the committee can bring forward concerns or priorities from the community that may be addressed during this priority planning meetings. In additions, the, like, there are other duties and function that can be found in Police Governance Regulation. Next question council had was, if we can establish a joint committee with our neighboring municipalities, MD and Sois First Nation. As our, due to the fact that our resources are shared between the two, like, neighboring municipalities as well. So we, we heard back that communities policed by PPSA, which is Provincial Police Service Agreement, do not have a requirement to form a police governance body. All PPSA communities will fall under Provincial Police Advisory Report. They do recognize that informal police advisory committees or regional advisory committee continue to exist, and collaboration amongst neighboring communities is recognized as being valuable. Although these, these advisory groups are not recognized in legislation, an MPSA community along with neighboring PPSA communities may collaborate to form an informal police advisory committee. Next question council had was, would the municipality be required to appoint a public complaint officer within the committee? It was confirmed that the role of the public complaint director has been repealed from the legislation. However, a policing committee may still choose to appoint committee member to serve as a point of contact for residents to connect with issues, public safety concerns, and/or how to navigate the RCMP complaint processes. And the last one was, what were the, what are the key differences between Police Governance Regulations and Police Governance Ministerial Regulations, and which one applies to our municipality? So it was confirmed that both, both regulations have specific sections that will be applicable to our municipalities. The Police Governance Regulation outlines the duties, function, composition of municipal, regional, and joint policing committees. And the Police Governance Ministerial Regulation outlines the details of ministers' powers, including the ability to appoint committee members and approve opt-outs from regional committees. Based on the provided clarification, administration is requesting council to approve the proposed bylaw. Council have a couple of options. Council can give all three reading tonight and to request, and direct administration to request a ministerial approval to create a municipal policing committee. And option two is council gives first reading and bring back the bylaw on September ninth meeting, which would be next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you. I'll open up the floor to council. Counselor Adams.
I got a few, but we'll start with an easy one. This is more for Roland, I guess. What is the annual police support grant? What does that account for? Do we get requests or is that something that is just, here's your money, we're done?
As long as we're talking about the PSG, that's the new, that's the grant that we've been getting. Used to, there used to be two components of it. The new one is about three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a year.
So out of that, we can add this into that request? Are they, do we even get a say in what that number is?
For the grant amount or whatever? No, it's been like, the grant is basically, there's a formula that drives it. That's the amount of allocation that we get, so.
So that's definitely not what we're supposed to spend out of that.
Yeah, which realistically is, you know, I mean, we're using it to offset our RCMP costs. So at the end of the day, you know, whatever this is, yeah, okay, we can use the grant money. It's still, let's say, five grand less to spend on the RCMP or peace officers than, than we had before.
You want to, you want to continue?
Nope, go on to the next one.
Counselor Hughes.
I guess on that note, I think we maybe said it last week as a question, but maybe not. Do we have an estimation on what this would be as a budgetary impact? The cost of council creating a new committee? Are we paying the members? Are they volunteer? Like, I don't know if we've ran any numbers on that, or?
So I'm going to say best guess, depending on, you know, the, the amount of meetings, the amount of expenses, the amount of interest in the program. So, you know, we have a set amount here. We pay people on the SDAB and all those kind of boards, right?
Right.
So generally, if there's people, you know, lining up and we, you know, have way too many applicants that want to sit on this board, you know, you could probably get away with a little bit less of an honorarium. If we're having challenges recruiting people, that's definitely something I'm going to look at. But I would say anywhere between three and seven thousand dollars, just ballpark.
Three to seven annually?
Annual, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that, Counselor Adams. Or you, sorry, so no. How did you go back and forth?
To go on that one.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My understanding is the committee gets to dictate what it wants to do. So if it wants to meet fifty-seven times, they can, right? Am I mistaken?
Yeah, because the regulation only gives like minimum requirement.
Right.
It's up to the.
And it's up to the committee itself in order to set that. So this can go crazy, but anyway, yeah, it is what it is.
Did administration want to weigh in on that, or are we good? Okay, nope, just ping pong matching. Counselor Hughes, continue.
Um, just in response for the answer for question three, I think I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this correctly. So basically, what we were asking is why can we not partner with our neighbors, right? The MD, the Sarwich First Nation at the last meeting? The answer here is you're kind of saying you may collaborate to form an informal police advisory committee. So is that actually saying yes, we could? Or that's saying no, because that would be informal? I just want to make sure.
We can still, so pretty much what they're saying is you can still create with your neighbors.
Yeah.
But that, that won't be recognized through the regulation or legislation.
So we would, we would have two. We would have the formal recognized one, but we would have to have another one with our neighbors?
If we want to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understand the difference there. And there's no negotiation on this point to be had? Had you reached out to Alberta municipalities or some of the other ideas? I guess I'm wondering now, as we discussed last meeting.
I haven't heard back yet, but as far as I'm concerned, the rest of the province pretty much has hopped on board with this as it was mandated. So we're one of the last, if not the last.
To be clear, I'm not asking because I don't want to hop on board, but it just feels like we're kind of being forced to do something in a silo. And it's, I, I just want it to make sense for our community, and right now it kind of doesn't. So that's just where I'm at, and I just want to understand this fully before adopting a bylaw and committing to it.
Counselor Gramlich.
I think I said too much last time, but I don't think you'll ever fully understand it. It doesn't make sense. It's ridiculous, so. That's good, I said it all last time.
Counselor Adams.
I feel this is actually a step backwards by mandating us to do this. I feel we're losing our collaboration with our neighbors, with First Nations. We're going it alone now. I think it's. Uh, I, I think it's stupid, for lack of a better term, but I get it's in the act. We don't have a choice. My other question for you was the order that we have this in here, don't we have to get uh uh ministerial approval first to be able to go to a municipal style rather than regional before we pass the bylaw?
I believe they asked for our bylaw first.
So we pass a bylaw, saying it's law before we have permission to get.
So yes, we have to do bylaw and then we also have to send a letter asking for opting out of the regional committee.
They said no, we'd have to repeal the bylaw and then.
That is how we got the input.
Counselor Grantwick.
Hey, well, I still want to wait until they get this straightened out because what Counselor Adams is pointing out is perfectly how it's, it, they're doing it backwards, not unlike taking books out of libraries, but not those books. These are the ones we meant, but we said those one. This doesn't make sense. So when they get their ducks in a row, then I'll read one of these crazy bylaw motion, but I, it doesn't make sense. So I don't want to do it. They it's crazy to me.
Counselor Adams.
Well, uh, again, just sorry, so I can understand this. They told us directly that they need a bylaw first before they give us approval to do the bylaw.
Yes, they said because, because we are the last municipality in that region. So they are like, you don't have other options but to create your own and sending a letter requesting that from the minister is just going to be approved, right? So.
Well.
Counselor Grantwick.
But like, just because something's going to be approved, doesn't mean you could do it. I want to approve. I'm not talking to you, talking to no one at the province who's listening. You, we can approve this house that's going to get approved, but you can't build it till it's approved. Like this, this is not how you do it. There's bylaws and procedures for a reason. So the province saying, just do it this way, because we said to, makes me even more mad. Like, it, it does not, it does not make sense. That's not how things work. Not to you, Kush, but to them.
Honestly, I would just like to move to task administration, draft a letter, request a ministerial approval for the town of Slave Lake to have their own policing committee and leave it at that. See if we get permission and then wait for that, we get the bylaw.
That is a reasonable compromise, Counselor Adams. I agree with all of the rest of my colleagues here with I'm not a huge fan of that and that's not directing it at you. I said this to the individuals from our staff presenting last time. The anger misdirected, but you happen to have to be presenting the report here, so it's not at you.
No.
Um, this is I understand that it's mandated, but let's do the letter first.
Okay.
Is what my opinion is, and we're going to take a vote on that. So there is a motion that administration draft the letter regarding this. Um, and uh, motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion, Counselor Hughes?
I guess just curious if there could be any immediate repercussions going this route or?
Not really. It's just going to slow down the process, right? So we have to bring the report back and then we'll have to do the, the bylaw readings. So.
Darn. Great. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion to that? Okay, I'll call to question those in favor. And that is carried. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Pardon? Counselor Grantwick?
Go up, make a motion, then table this.
Until we get a response.
Until the letter comes back from Minister Ellis or his staff.
Okay, so there's a motion to table the.
Municipal Peace Policing Committee bylaw.
Until responses received from the provincial government. Any further discussion? Called to question those in favor. And that one is carried. Okay, we're going to move right on into question period. Do we have anything for administration?
Counselor Adams.
Since it was the first day of school today, how did it go with uh what we did in the school zones? I know uh we had requested uh more police just for visual presence, same thing with bylaw and anybody else in town. How'd that, like, town stop? I mean, how'd that go?
Uh, so I talked with the peace officer uh just before the meeting here. Um, didn't really get an update from the RCMP yet, but they were out. Um, the theme of the day was education, education, education. Um, so from the town's perspective and from what we saw on our end, um, most of the school zones went okay. Um, when there was the presence around, uh, speeds uh were dropped. People were obeying uh the rules of the road. Uh, basically in all the school districts except for one, um, where three people were pulled over and that was at uh St. Mary's. Um, just being on the main road there. Uh, three people did need to be reminded that uh the school zone was in effect. Um, everything was okay. It was just simply a educational piece when we did, did pull them over. They complied, no complaints. But all in all, um, the, uh, the message back from the peace officer was that, uh, he felt that the day went uh really well.
I'll hop in there and, and I will say, um, I live near the, one of the elementary schools and it was great to see our fire department out and the lights were flashing and it was very, um, it was very obvious and very well presented. And I saw our staff out there, um, our fire staff. And then there was our CMP, our bylaw officer, peace officer. Um, I think the response was really good. And they're also, the signs also went out on the weekend. Um, so we have a few of those digital display boards that went out as well to remind drivers that uh school was starting. So, um, Counselor Adams.
I just want to say uh two things. First, I really appreciate the effort the town has made this year in pushing that forward. I know we've kind of been harping on it for the entire term. But uh it's nice to start seeing that collaboration grow for multiple groups to come together to try and just make it safer for kids. I appreciate that. Um, is this something that is only being done today or is this something that is planned for the whole week? Or how is that? Do you know how that lays out? I know you're interim, so I'm not sure, but.
Being the first one on here, I'll touch base with the uh, the group there. I just, uh, I wasn't informed.
Generally, I know fire is usually out on the first day. Um, and then I know that we have requested from the RCMP um, more frequent patrols. And I know that our peace officer also is doing patrols on pickups, um, our pickup times. Um, just to make their, you know, presence known and, and aware and just encourage, you know, educate. And sometimes a visible signal like our bylaw car and our peace officer vehicle and our CMP just reminds drivers, hey, wait a minute, let's pay attention. So I think they've been doing a really good response and it was great to see everybody out so far. But yes, I believe it's just the first day is the big push. Signs are going to be up for the rest of the week.
And I do know like from past years, peace officers do go out just to get that uh transition back into schools a thing again. Summer's done.
Takes a few days.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Counselor Grantwick.
You may know or you may not know, but I'm always curious and I, uh, CEO mentioned it might be on this agenda. Do we know when our legal is coming back?
Next week?
Like a real next week or like a last week one when it was next week?
No, next week. I'm finishing up. We, uh, the committee, the in-house committee, uh, met today. Uh, re- reviewed all of the submissions and I'll be finalizing the report uh tomorrow. So you'll see that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any further? Okay, we will move into State of the Lake. Counselor Grantwick.
I wish we would have done this the last time he was here, but he never came the next time. So Pearl's here today. I want to say congratulations to Joe McWilliams on his retirement. I think it's like thirty-five years. So I wanted to do it when he was sitting there, but then he missed the meeting before. So anyway, congratulations, Joe. If you're watching at home, you're crazy after sitting here for all the live ones, but congratulations.
That's where, welcome again, Pearl. We've seen you a whole bunch before. Um, so that's fantastic. What a career. That's fantastic. Anything else for State of the Lake, Counselor Choba?
We can see, um, September ninth is uh the annual FASD Day. Um, Tupper Community for Services is hosting a community event to commemorate the FASD Day and it invites the general public, everybody in Slave Lake, feel free to come. It's at the Renee O Pla- Renee O Hall Gazebo, um, on Main Street. Um, there's going to be hot dogs, burgers, pop, whatever you call it, and there's going to be swag, games and music and prizes to be worn, to be won. Um, and they have a mocktail challenge as well and they have lots of prizes. So everyone's welcome. Tuesday, September ninth from twelve noon until six PM.
Anything further there? Okay, then. We have correspondence in the package regarding National Depression Screening Day of October ninth. Um, and the request is for us to prepare that cross nation. Everyone's got it in the back of their, Counselor Choba?
I like to move to, I like to make a motion to for October ninth to be National Depression Screening Day and for mayor proclamation.
Okay, so there's a motion to there's a motion to proclaim October ninth, twenty twenty-five in Slave Lake as National Depression Screening Day. Do we have any further discussion from council? Called to question those in favor. And that is carried. This one isn't as long as some of them, but hold on. Counseling Alberta is committed to providing affordable and professional counseling services that help build better lives for Albertans. Since two thousand and five, National Depression Screening Day has raised community awareness by offering a free and anonymous online screening tool for depression. Whereas depression is the most treatable mental health issue, early treatment promotes faster recovery and prevents long-term effects on individuals and their families. Whereas in two thousand twenty-four, of the two thousand four hundred ninety-eight Albertans who participated in the NDSD online screening test, sixty-three percent were recommended to seek further evaluation. Whereas during the week of October sixth to twelfth, Albertans are encouraged to check in on their mental health and take the online, the free online screening test at areyoufeelingokay.com. On behalf of Town of Slave Lake Council, I hereby proclaim October ninth, twenty twenty-five as National Depression Screening Day. And with that, Counselor Hughes.
Uh, motion to adjourn.
Called to question those in favor. And that is carried.